Hello, it's 7:00 PM and so Emily said, this is Talia for the record. Emily, you're here, John's here, Carolyn's here, and Ron is here. Al will likely be joining us later. I'm not sure about Keith's ETA as of yet, but when he joins, we can welcome him then.
Okay. Given that it's 7:00 PM and we have a large agenda tonight, I'm inclined to just get started. And I agree, we'll welcome Keith when he joins. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hopkinton Planning Board to order, April 7th, 2021. It is 7:01 PM. And we're going to begin with a roll call. I'm going to read everyone's name and you just say present. Al Diario. Al is absent. Ron Proletz. Emily Shumshinya, present. Keith Lindeloe. Absent for now. Carolyn Light.
Present.
John Penny Packer.
Present.
All right, and now on to our pre-roll call. This is for expected attendance in the next meeting on May 5th, 2021. So when I call your name, just say yes if you expect to attend. Al Diorio, who is absent, can obviously not tell us that. Ron Proletz.
Yes.
Emily Shumshinya, yes. Keith Lindeloe, who is so far still absent, it looks like.
Yes.
Carolyn Light.
Yes.
And John Penny Packer.
Yes.
Okay. The next agenda item is approval of the minutes from March 3rd, our regular meeting. Any discussion on the minutes from last month?
None from Carolyn.
None from Ron.
None from John.
Okay. Okay, hearing no concerns, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Carolyn, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 3rd meeting.
Okay, Carolyn makes a motion. A motion from Carolyn and a second from Ron. Any further discussion on the minutes? All right, I'll call for a vote to approve the minutes. Shumshinya, yes.
Proletz, yes.
John, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Yeses have it. Still no Keith, correct?
Still no Keith.
Okay. So just procedurally, because first and foremost, we didn't expect Al, I think we should elevate John to be a full member for today?
That's correct.
Okay, so John will will vote with us today, and if Keith doesn't join before we get to an appropriate agenda item or appropriate part where we're going to be voting, we will just have four voting members, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? This is Carolyn, can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
If Keith does come back, but Al does not come back, does John get to participate?
Yes.
Completely?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So before we dive into old business, I just wanted to suggest an overall plan for the meeting, given the size of the agenda tonight. I know that there might be some revisions to the agenda, but I'm going to state this anyway, just so that we're all on the same page. We have five agenda items between old and new business. I think we all intend to complete all of those items by 10:00 PM tonight. To do this, we're going to have to watch the clock fairly carefully to make sure we get everything in. I'd like all participants to just be respectful of that time that we have to manage carefully tonight. The planning board's going to require some longer periods of discussion for some of the more complicated agenda items. For applicants that are presenting, please expect between 15 and 30 minutes of presentation time, depending on the stage of your project and the complexity. I'm thinking that for the first two agenda items, we'll allocate 60 minutes each, since these are fairly far along. They're complex and large projects, and we'll use the remaining 60 minutes of the meeting to handle the final three agenda items, which are a little bit lesser in scope, given their stage and status. So that's how I'm going to suggest we proceed, and so we're going to jump into old business. And the first item is
Excuse me, Emily, sorry, this is Talia, just to let you know Keith did arrive, I just wanted to let you know that before
Fantastic.
Before you got in.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So yeah, sorry.
No problem. Keith, you're good for next month, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As long as I get the right password and reading ID, I apologize.
No problem. Glad you joined us. Okay. So old business, we're at the third master plan, a major land development project for Stone Ridge at Hopkinton. AP 11, Lot 47A, Zero Palmer Circle, RI 95 LLC applicant. Just to provide a little bit of background, this is the third master plan meeting. At the last meeting in March, we did not, it was on the agenda, but we did not hear the application at the request of the applicant. So we're here today. I just wanted to do a quick check-in on the status of the project and the timeline, the review timeline. Jim and/or Talia, can you weigh in and just confirm that the review timeline for the project is a decision by April 7th, which is tonight?
Yes, Emily, this is Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. Mr. Landry, who is representing this application, would like to has requested by an email today, an extension till the May 5th, through the May 5th meeting. He would like to continue this public informational meeting to that May 5th meeting as well. So the initial decision period, we've surpassed that by quite a bit, but there have been several extensions for this project along the way that have been granted, so. I'll let, I believe Mr. Landry is on the line, and I'll let him present his proposal to you tonight.
This is Talia, Mr. Landry is on the line, and Mr. Landry, I have unmuted you, so whenever Emily gives you the go-ahead, you can proceed.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Landry, take it away.
Thanks, Ms. Shumshinya. It was not our intention to request that this matter be continued. We had all of our consultants and experts ready to make very compact presentations on all of the issues that we described to you that we were working on last month. It came to my attention earlier today by the attorney for the Skulkos, Mr. Squares, that there was no new public advertisement of this meeting tonight in the newspaper, seven days before the meeting. He also advises, I have not seen the minutes of the last meeting, but he advises that the meeting, and I don't question this, I have not reviewed the minutes. He advises that the meeting was not continued to a date certain at the March meeting, and therefore a new legal advertisement was required. And we're not aware that that was done. Mr. Squares has not been able to locate an advertisement, and I think we're in agreement that there was not a re-advertising. So the question is, and it comes up from time to time, not often, but it comes up, the courts have been unanimous that a juristic, that a lack of proper notice of the meeting is a jurisdictional impediment to a valid meeting taking place on a project, unfortunately. And very reluctantly, but necessarily, Mr. Squares asked us to continue the meeting to the March, to the May agenda. And indicated that they also had some review that they'd like to do of some supplemental materials that we provided, as we had said we would. And I unfortunately feel that that's what has to be done here, is any decision that the board makes, up or down on this project, would be impacted if one of the public informational meetings and presentation meetings along the way was not a legal meeting. So it's our reluctant request that this be continued to the May agenda. We have provided the board consistently with additional time to consider this matter. It's not my practice to try to squeeze a board that way, and the board has been courteous with us as an applicant in giving us the time to respond to the various issues that the board asked us to to develop further as part of this presentation, which we've done. So I confirmed in writing to Mr. Lamphier, together with my request, that we would extend the time for action by the board. I'm suggesting till the end of the May meeting, but we would certainly extend it to whatever time period the board reasonably felt was appropriate under the circumstances.
Excellent, thanks for that explanation. I'll turn to Maggie, our solicitor here, for some guidance about, sounds like we can extend the review period till at least May, but Mr. Landry indicated that they are also flexible on extending that review period beyond May. What do you recommend?
I would recommend that the board accept that representation. And you would make a motion to continue the matter this evening to the date certain of May, is it 5th?
5th.
And with the understanding that the parties would be ready to present that evening, hopefully.
Okay, great. So do we have a motion to extend this topic to the May 5th meeting?
This is Ron, I'll make the motion that we extend the timeframe for this item until May 5th.
And continue the hearing to May 5th.
Yes, sorry, and continue the hearing to May 5th.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, do we have a second?
This is Carolyn, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this extension to May 5th?
Yeah, Keith, I was just wondering if we should, only because there seems to be a lot of outstanding items, moving parts. Maybe we should just say June, or just stick with May and then extend again if we need to for another month?
We do have the option of requesting that extension again when we get to the May meeting. What others think?
I'm fine with one month, then.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to vote. So all in favor of accepting this extension to May 5th?
Emily, pardon me, sorry. Could you just do a roll call vote, since it's a remote meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so the vote on the motion to extend this issue and the hearing to May 5th. Shumshinya, yes. Proletz?
Proletz, yes. Yes. Oh, yes.
Light, yes.
Penny Packer, yes.
Okay. The result is yes, five yeses.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Okay, moving on to new business. The master plan, public informational hearings, major land development project, photovoltaic solar energy system, Comoli Solar, AP 2, Lot 73, Zero Cheese Hill Road, Unit 2, Centrica Business Solutions applicant.
Quickly, again, this is Talia, sorry, Emily. So I noticed a few days ago, actually, that I made a scrivener's error. I spoke to Maggie about it, but this is actually going to be a public informational meeting and not a hearing. I just put hearing instead of meeting, but it doesn't change any aspect of it coming before the board. It's just an error that I made on my part. So when it comes time to make a motion, regardless of what the motion is, it's important to refer to it as a meeting and not a hearing. But just for that clarity.
Thanks for that, yeah, sounds good. So master plan, public informational meeting is the agenda item. Just to get a sense for where that is in the review stage clock, do we have any risk today of running out some kind of clock on our review for this project?
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, no. You have 90 days to make a decision on this matter from the date of certification of completeness, which was March 18th. So we have 90 days, but I'm sure there'll be extensions along the way.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Is the applicant present?
I believe so. Could you please press, oh, there you are. Please state your name for the record, Joelle.
Good evening, Joelle Rocha, attorney for the applicants.
Thank you.
Good evening, members. We did send a letter earlier today requesting a continuance. Most if not all of you are familiar with this project. There, part of the conditions of approval from the zone change were conservation easement in favor of the land trust, who's also in a butter to the property. The property owner has been out of the state or out of the country. So there hasn't been, they haven't touched base. I was just retained this week in order to coordinate directly with the land trust on behalf of the property owner. So I have reached out to the land trust to set up with a meeting next week to work through some of their issues and what they're looking for, and see if we can come to terms with respect to that conservation easement. And at the same time, also coordinate with the Conservation Commission on the minutes, the summary of the minutes we actually just received this morning, to see if we can narrow the issues before this board prior to hearing on the master plan. Some of you may have been in attendance, or may be aware that there was a site visit last week. And so the Conservation Commission members and the land trust were present at that meeting, so it gives a good feel for some of the questions they raised, so we'd like to see if we can address both the Conservation Commission and the land trust to the extent possible, again, and narrow the issues before the master plan hearing.
Attorney Rocha, this is Attorney Hogan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Is your request also accompanied by a equal time for extension, since we're not able to hear it this evening?
That's fine, we can do an additional 30 days. We don't have a problem with that. Like Jim said, it doesn't run out till mid-June, so we do have two meetings, but if that's what the board wants to do, that's fine.
I think we'd appreciate that. We know we have a very dense couple of meetings coming up, so
Understood.
More flexibility, the better. Thank you so much.
Understood.
Any questions from the board on this? Okay, so this would be another, similar to the last item, we would need a motion to continue this public informational meeting to the May 5th meeting, contingent on the applicant also providing permission to extend the review timeline for this project 30 days.
Emily, this is Talia. There's a member of the public who'd like to comment. Would you like to have them weigh in before the vote or after the vote?
After the vote, Maggie?
And the board's in the middle of a vote.
Okay. Looking for the motion.
This is John Penny Packer. I will move that we extend the decision deadline by 30 days and continue the hearing to May 5th.
Fantastic, thanks. Second? I heard a couple seconds, Ron's most clearly. Sorry, Carolyn.
I need to amend John's motion. We're going to continue the meeting.
Thank you.
Till the 5th. Yep, with the additional extension authorized by the project people, I guess.
Great. Do we need to restate that more clearly, or is that good for the record?
Talia, you got that?
Could you say it one more time? I apologize.
Why are you doing this to me? This is Carolyn, I'd like to amend John's motion to continue the meeting until the May 5th Planning Board session with the approval of the applicant to extend the decision date by an additional 30 days.
I got it that time. This is Talia.
And now we need a second on the amendment.
I'll second the amendment, this is Ron.
Perfect. Any further discussion on this? Okay, please state your name and your vote. Shumshinya, yes?
Proletz, yes. Lindeloe, yes.
Light, yes.
Penny Packer, yes.
Great, unanimous five yeses.
Okay, that was the amendment. Now vote on the main motion.
Okay.
As amended.
Now, I'm going to call for a vote on the main motion as amended. Please state your name and your vote. Shumshinya, yes?
Proletz, yes. Lindeloe, yes.
Light, yes.
Penny Packer, yes.
Great, the amendment and the main motion both pass five yeses. Okay, before we move on to the next agenda item, should we hear public comment on this quickly?
That's the chair's prerogative, yep.
Okay. Talia, you can invite, I think it's Mr. Bibler would like to speak.
Please state your name for the record, Mr. Bibler.
Hi, Eric Bibler, Woodville Road. I don't have a comment, I just have a question through the chair. Attorney Rocha referenced some minutes of the Conservation Commission that would be relevant to this topic, but she didn't give the date of the minute, so I just wanted to ask Attorney Rocha, what was the date of the meeting for the Conservation Commission where the relevant minutes would be found?
The minutes we became aware of are actually on the town's website. So that's how we became aware of it for this meeting.
Do you know the date?
I don't, I don't have them in front of me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on now. We're still under new business, right? We have a preliminary plan, two lot, minor subdivision, AP 3, Lot 5E, 56 Tomahquag Road, Kenneth L. and Laura Taylor applicants. This is the first time the board's hearing this application. It is a preliminary plan, so this is not the first time the board's hearing this application. Is that true, Jim?
Yes, Emily, this is the minor subdivision. Preliminary plan is the first stage of it. The board has not seen this yet, first time to the board.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. The applicant's present?
Yes.
Good evening. My name.
Oh, sorry. I was gonna, this is Talia. I was going to ask you to state your name to the record, but you were getting to that part, so I apologize.
No, not a problem. Uh, my name is Raymond Taylor. I live at 40 Tomacwag Road. Uh, my parents are the ones who are, uh, making this application. They're the owners of 56. Um, the reason I'm speaking today is my wife Catherine and I are looking to have this subdivision granted in order to build a house for ourselves so that we may, you know, have our American dream. We're looking to, you know, create a, we have a four-bedroom dwelling, a raised ranch house. So we're trying to seek preliminary approval of this plan. As I stated, a single-family residence with the associated utilities. It's located currently within an oak forest, which has been recently decimated by the gypsy moth infestation that we all know and remember. My understanding is that this proposal meets all the requirements for the subdivision, including frontage and setbacks. The property itself has a 24-inch water table, as noted, under a inspector. Uh, it's not located within any wetlands, as per Ms. Kathy Mangan, a wetland biologist. And there should be a letter to that extent with the application. I currently have a septic design approved by DEMs, OWTS. The application number is 20147, uh, 0760, set for expiration on 10/1/2025. During the construction, we proposed erosion control measures, including track pads, hay bales, and silt fencing. Uh, again, we are seeking a preliminary approval. And we were hoping potentially for a administrative handling of the final approval of this plan.
Okay, thank you. Planning Board, any questions for the applicant?
This is Ron. I have none.
This is Carolyn. I don't have any questions.
Keith Lindelof here. No questions.
I don't have any, this is John. I also have no questions. It looks, it looks cut and dried and.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Do folks have the draft motion that our solicitor provided to us previous to the meeting? So basically what we could do here, someone could make a motion, make the, the positive findings enumerated in Jim's memo and in our draft motion without any additional conditions, it sounds like, of approval. And that motion would also delegate final plan approval to an administrative officer. So if there's no further discussion, it sounds like we're ready to make that motion if someone would be so willing.
Emily, if I could interject, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, I think there may be some people, uh, on the line that would like to comment on this before you vote.
Understood.
I, I, I don't, I don't have any, you know, comment to make on it myself.
This is Talia. Jim is correct.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yep, let's go to the, the hands.
Please state your name for the record. After pressing, um, score nine, Ms. Pantera, please.
He's muted.
Yes. Hi, this is Andrea Pantera. And I am a representative of one of the abutting property owners, the Kenneth and Gilda Pantera Trust and David Pantera. Uh, we have a farm property that is mostly east of the proposed subdivision. And we had received notice just about a week ago, so uh, we haven't had a chance for everyone to have much of a review of the proposal. As you said, it does seem cut and dry. Uh, we do have a concern that, um, these bounds and boundaries as seen on really what is just the two lot subdivision plan match our bounds and boundaries on our own surveys. Because all I have been able to see is just the plan for the two lots. And I don't have a, a sense of a greater context of how this lies next to our land. And I would like to have the opportunity to see that. We also, just to make sure everyone else knows, our land that does the but that lot, uh, the proposed lot number one is, uh, land that was sold to the state, the development rights were sold to the state. So it's not just our own private interest here that is of concern, but also land that has been surveyed, um, by the state. And they, the DEM holds, uh, the rights to it. So is another special concern to make sure that everything is indicated properly. So my request is to have more of an opportunity to see that, whether it's to visit Jim and see the larger, uh, maps and how they work together, or another way that I could do this, but would like to see that before the board takes a vote. And if I can continue, we also, it's not clear to me where the driveways actually go here. I understand that two lots do have proper road frontage, but I can't see, again, based on what I'm looking at, where the driveways go in. Do they both go in, be it Tomacwag Road at the, where the road frontage is for those lots?
Jim Lamphier Town Planner, yes, Andrea, there, there are driveways, uh, going out to Tomacwag Road on both of these lots.
And from the lots themselves, they're not going around any of the other lots.
Right.
Directly there. Okay.
Yes, the driveways go right through the frontage.
Okay. And at the, um, east end of the map, there's a link is, uh, that shows one of the boundaries with our land and with Ashaway Pines. Is that link or chain, is that supposed to be stonewall? It doesn't say so on the legend.
Yes, Andrea, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, again, um, normally when you see links like that, they do indicate a stone wall. Uh, it's not identified in the legend. I, I will let the, uh, Mr. Taylor respond to that, who knows his property better than I do.
Uh, this is Raymond Taylor.
Yes.
That is indeed stonewall.
Okay. That's what I thought. It's about the only thing that's there. Um, and my last question, if I still can ask this one. Now, these are proposed to single house lots. And Mr. Taylor, you said that one of the lots is, um, for you as for your own personal use. And the other lot, would that be for sale? Is that the intention?
Uh, a private party sale from my parents to my younger brother, actually, is the intention for that lot.
And I ask this question because I do like to look ahead. They're both quite large lots, which is, um, great. Um, but they also, I wondered if they might have a future potential for more subdivision. Uh, and I was, wanted to raise that as a concern. But you're telling me that you and your brother, family lots, basically, is the intended use?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. So my final question remaining is whether we can have a chance to look at this a little more closely, just to make sure that what the drawing that we're seeing is accurate compared to what, uh, our own maps and charts have.
Can the applicant provide an opportunity, what is, uh, Raymond, what is your thought on working with Andrea to, to get a better understanding of the, the map here?
I mean, I'd like to move forward with this. I've been waiting quite a while, um, in order to get into a meeting. I, it's my understanding that the notifications went out, I believe, with the required buffer of time as well as, uh, the plans being available online for a period of time. Now I'm unsure of when they were posted.
I can tell you that the postcard that I received was dated March 24th, and I received it March 31st. This is now April 7th. I did immediately ask Jim for a copy of the diagram of the two lots. But they are not placed really within context, um, that I would like to see, a larger context of our property, which does wrap around that lot on both, partially on the east and on the north. And it is tricky there. Uh, so I want to confirm that what you have spelled out for your bounds and boundaries is the same as we have in our deeds and, uh, charts on file, surveys on file. And I haven't had the opportunity to do that.
Understood. This is a question now for, um, Jim and our solicitor. Is, if the board votes on the preliminary plan tonight, is there an opportunity to do this review, um, with the abutter prior to the submission of the final plan, or are things, are we essentially locking this map in in stone essentially by voting on it tonight?
Yes, Emily, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, I would suggest what the board might want to consider here, uh, as I look at this plan now. Um, you could approve the preliminary plan with conditions. And the condition that I would recommend is that, uh, a class one survey be done on both of these lots, proposed lot one and proposed lot two, and bring that administratively to the planner for administrative approval, uh, with the class one survey being done. I notice on the plan here that the class one survey was only done on proposed lot two here, that a compilation survey was done on the proposed lot one. I wish I picked up on that. I should have picked up on that. We're, I hope everybody can appreciate that my office is, uh, quite busy. And I'm trying to put things on agendas at, uh, at the, at the 11th hour. If I had plenty of time to look at something in detail, I would have picked up on this. I think both of those lots should have had class one surveys on them. As you saw at the, at previous meetings where we've gone through boundary things like this, we were able to rest on the fact that the subdivision had a class one survey, period. And that, that neighbors did not. Okay, so we rested on what a professional gave to us. This is a class, we, the old class four survey, a compilation survey on proposed lot one. So I would say, um, you could approve this, uh, plan, um, you know, conceptually here, it's got, it's, it's probably very close to being in the ballpark, to being correct. And I don't think a class one survey is going to change this plan substantively at all, but it could change it somewhat. And I think Ms. Pantera brings up a very important point, that, uh, now is the time to get these boundary lines straightened out. So I would say, approve the preliminary plan, subject to the applicant bringing to me at final a, a class one survey on both of these lots. And Mrs. Pantera can be provided, be provided with a copy of that class one survey. And at that point, we can compare her boundaries with this subject property. So that, that's a way to move this project forward and still get done what we need to get done.
Awesome. Thanks, Jim. Is that, uh, amenable to you, Ms. Pantera?
Yes, it is. We have had a class one survey performed on our land, which I believe is on file at the town hall. So, uh, and this was part of the process with the DEM. So I would feel much more comfortable that we're all matched up. And, uh, there would be nothing that might become a problem down the road.
Great. And Mr. Taylor, you okay with this too?
Yeah, I'll have it done.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, may I just interject for just a moment? Ms. Pantera, was your, um, survey performed by Cataldo Associates?
That was one of them, yes. We actually have had two surveys performed, but only one is on file. It's my memory of that.
Okay, so the, if it's, if something's not on file, then the current surveyor is not going to know about it. But he has referenced, he has referenced the Cataldo March, pardon me, February 4th, 2005 survey.
2005, yes. I understand.
And, um, Madam Chair, when the board gets to the findings of fact, you'll want to include an additional finding of fact that a class one, uh, survey has been performed for lot number two.
Okay.
But not lot number one.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the public at this point?
This is Talia. No, there are not.
Okay. So I think we are, oh, has this, actually, has this changed any planning board comments or opinions on this? Do we need to have a short discussion before we proceed?
This is John. I would, I guess I would ask for a little bit of clarity on future use. Um, that is, from what I understand, it, the, the plan is not to subdivide further. The plan shows that the, the, the back of both lots is probably going to remain wooded. Uh, Mr. Taylor, can you confirm or elucidate on, on the, the future plans?
Sure, uh, it'd be my pleasure. Um, my intention for at least my portion of the lot, and that, from what I understand, my brother's, you know, what he will end up having, is that we're gonna just have a wooded lot, or I might clear a little area for a future barn and maybe a garden. I'm just looking to do kind of those types of activities. Uh, that's my understanding for my brother as well, just residential rural type things. Maybe I'll get a couple of chickens. I don't know.
Thank you.
Of course.
Madam Chair, just, uh, Mr. Lamphier has pointed out to you in his memorandum that it does not appear as though additional future subdivision would be permissible. And I believe that's because there's only access to Tomacwag Road, and there would be insufficient, uh, frontage to put another lot in there or road and still have sufficient frontage for the two lots that are there. The only other way they'd get to the backland would be to remove one of the houses, the new one that they're gonna build, or the existing one. So, um, unless Jim wants to, um, tell me that I'm wrong.
Well, Maggie, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, uh, just to second-guess myself here a little bit in what I put in my own memo, uh, looking at this plan as I did this afternoon, I, potentially, maybe a residential compound. Uh, see, we have 12 acres here. So, uh, if, if someone wanted to reconfigure this and put a, um, right-of-way off of Tomacwag Road that goes, you know, into their well radius, the 100-foot well radius, I think you'd get away with that and put a house back there. I, I wouldn't advise it. I don't think it's good planning, but they do have 12 acres.
Wouldn't, would you have to recombine them to do that, or could you do it in the the 12, oh, you could, you're saying you could possibly do it on the 12-acre one?
Yes, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, about just, uh, working with the 12-acre lot, but that, but that's a good idea too, possibly. Possibly you could recombine these lots in some fashion and make a compound out of, out of them and get one more lot. It's, it's a little tough to, you know, imagine all the possible scenarios that could result in these. When somebody says any future subdivision possible here, um, you know, we could well put our thinking caps on it, come up with something creative, but you know, I, I, again, you know, they both have the minimum, uh, frontage by, uh,
Right.
by the zone. Um, to, to get another lot out of this, you'd really have to put something very creative on paper, I would say that.
And ultimately, whether the lot is, um, developable in the future is not relevant to the board's consideration this evening. An applicant or a property owner certainly has the right to change their mind in the future and do something different if the regulations allow it. But it's not relevant to the board's deliberations for this particular proposal.
Understood. Um, John, you have all the info you need?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So just one last call for discussion or questions on this before moving on. Ron, Carolyn, Keith, you guys good?
Yes, Ron is saying yes.
Keith there, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. So I think we're ready to hear a potential motion to approve this preliminary plan with an additional finding of fact relating to the Class 1 survey and an additional condition of approval related to that survey being completed on both lots.
Well, don't everybody jump up at once. This is John. All right, I'll do it. I will make a motion to approve Kenneth and Laura Taylor's application for a minor subdivision located at 56 Tomacwag, Tomacwag Road, Lot 5E for a total of two lots, based on the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. Findings of fact, the subject property consisting of 19 acres is located in an RFR 80 zone, which requires the following dimensions: Minimum size of 80,000 square feet, minimum frontage of 225 feet, minimum front yard setback of 60 feet, minimum side yard setback of 40 feet, and a minimum rear yard setback of 50 feet. Proposed Lot Number 1 will have 548,856 square feet, or 12.6 acres plus or minus, with 262.92 feet of frontage. Lot 1 has a pre-existing dwelling located thereon, which meets the minimum setback requirements. Proposed Lot 2 will have 273,932 square feet, or 6.29 acres, more or less, with 265.01 feet of frontage. Proposed Lot 2 has an approved septic system designed as required for subdivision purposes. It does not appear that further subdivision of this parcel would be possible. Both lots will take their access from the frontage on Tomacwag Road and will have adequate access for police, fire, and other agencies charged with protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The proposed lots do not present conflict with existing adjacent uses or existing features. The subdivision designer is Daniel F. Harrington III, ELS, and the proposed plan is dated January 26th, 2021, and is incorporated by reference herein. The subject property is not located in a natural heritage area or a zoning overlay district. There are no wetlands on the property as demonstrated by a letter from biologist Kathleen Mangan dated February 13, 2021. The applicants have represented as Note 5 on the site plan that they or their representative have investigated the water source proposed to serve the new lot and that sufficient water exists for this purpose. The applicants have further acknowledged that the town of Hopkinton, by this approval, makes no implied or expressed claim that inadequate water supply is available on-site, and that it is solely the responsibility of the applicants to provide adequate water. The plans submitted identify adequate erosion and sedimentation control requirements as well as a soil stabilization and planting program. And a Class 1 survey has been performed for Lot 2, but not for Lot 1. Conclusions of law. I'm so glad I'm not on mute. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the requirements of the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan. Each proposed lot conforms to the standards and provisions of the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance for lots located in the RFR 80 zone. There will be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development as shown on the final plan, with all required conditions of approval. The subdivision, as proposed, will not result in the creation of individual lots with such physical constraints to development that building on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would be impracticable. Impracticable. All proposed land developments and all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street, Tomacwag Road. The proposed development provides for safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites, and for preservation of natural, historical, and cultural features that contributes to the attractiveness of the community. The design and location of streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements, and other improvements in the proposed development minimizes flooding and soil erosion. Order, the proposed preliminary plan for this two-lot subdivision for Plat 3, Lot 5E is, is approved together with the following conditions of approval: that a Class 1 survey be completed on both lots. And...
Delegate to the planner for final.
And that, yes, the project is delegated to the planner for the administrative approval.
Perfect. Thanks, John. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Ron, I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's indicate our name and our vote. Shamshiniya, yes?
Oh, it's yes.
I'm the lawyer.
Mike, yes.
Penny Packer, yes.
All yeses. Thanks very much. All right. Our next agenda item is a pre-application for a major land development project, Wood River Health Services Edition, AP Lot, AP 14, Lot 47A, 823 Main Street, Wood River Health Services applicant. Is the applicant present?
Indeed.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Fercassa, and I represent Wood River Health Services, which is the applicant here tonight. What we're looking to do here is pretty straightforward. At the facility on Main Street, Wood River is looking to construct an additional two-story building, a little bit under 5,000 square feet for administration, patient space, clinical areas, offices, and meeting rooms. They also intend to redesign the parking lot to increase spaces from 81 to 127, also to, I believe, create additional pedestrian accessways and make them ADA compliant. There are no zoning issues involved with this, at least regarding dimensional zoning issues. We will need a special use permit from the zoning board because if memory serves, this is a non-conforming use. The property is on nearly 40 acres. It currently has three buildings on it of nearly 18,000 square feet total. It's currently served by a 5,000-gallon onsite wastewater treatment system, but we intend to add a new ounce to service this building only. There hasn't been an application to DEM yet, and obviously that's something we're going to have to do before we apply for a special use permit and for a preliminary plan review. There is a, the general outlines for stormwater management. There are several ideas for that in the, in the narrative report. And because this does need zoning approval, what will happen, or what must happen in this matter, is we must obtain conditional master plan approval. Then we go to the zoning board for the special use permit, and then we come back here for a preliminary and hopefully final plan. I do have the architect and the engineer on the project, if anyone has any questions. Hopefully, the planning board looks at this as fairly straightforward.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fercassa. Planning Board, questions?
This is Carolyn. I don't have any questions. I do think it's fairly straightforward. I did have a thought on the wastewater system for the addition. How, how big does that need to be?
That I don't know. It's probably going to be governed by DEM standards. The, the engineer on the project may be able to help you with that. I believe he is here tonight.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
This is, this is Mike Wilkinson from Wooded Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, one of the site civil engineers for the project. We have done some preliminary research into the sizing for an OWTS to serve the addition only. These are really rough numbers, but the leach field would potentially be in the order of 30 feet by 20 feet. And the septic tank, based on the need for one additional doctor, I think it was 250 gallons per day for the design flow. So our tank, I believe, was 1,000 gallons, and that was based on the minimum required by DEM's regulations. And so we have it preliminarily shown, kind of sort of in a courtyard area between the existing building and proposed building. That is definitely subject to change as we look further into the required setbacks from, from structures and utilities and whatnot as we move further along in the design.
Okay. I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Any other planning board comments or questions?
Sure, this is John, I'll go. I see notes on the, the plans that indicate that the property lines are pulled from the town GIS, and there's also a photo overlay, because it looks like we're building on someone else's property and well within our setbacks. How's that intended to play out?
Um, I'm just, I'm going to take a stab at this, and Mike, feel free to cut me off if I'm saying anything stupid here. I did notice, John, I did notice something, and I'm, I believe you might be referring to the, the overlay on the aerial photograph, and it looks like a portion of the existing parking lot, and nothing related to what Wood River intends to do, maybe on somebody's, somebody else's property. But we're going to need a full, you know, a full survey for this and not just an overlay from the, from the GIS. So that issue has definitely got to be resolved.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit more on that. We have since received a survey for the site since our submittal for, for this. And the property line that we had on our plan was estimated, kind of sort of traced in based on the town's GIS. But the property line is in fact, a little further to the west, I think that direction is. So the existing parking lot does not actually cross that property line. I don't know the distance off the top of my head, but it looks to be about eight or 10 feet away from that property line.
Okay, thank, I figured that was likely the case. I just wanted to clarify. And I guess the last question is, I know that driveways are fair game, but are we allowed to put impermeable pavement within the setbacks? I'm not sure. I'd have to look it up. Does anybody know?
That I don't know. That's Kelly Fercassa. I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, John, just to restate your question, you're asking whether impervious surfaces can exist within this 40-foot setback, side setback to the abutting property?
Yes, this is John, and also the, it looks like there's a little, a little tiny bit on the front.
Yep.
That said, all in all, I, I, I like the layout. I think it will definitely improve circulation on that side street. So I'm, I'm just really picking nits here, just to kind of dot all the i's.
This is Kelly Fercassa. John, in response to your question there, I'm going to take a quick stab at it. And Maggie, you jump in if I say something stupid here, but...
Oh, Kelly, I'd love to.
I don't believe that parking areas or driveways are the type of structures which require dimensional relief, and whether it's pervious or impervious. That's definitely something that has to be accounted for within the, the stormwater management plan and, and pervious or impervious surface. But I don't believe that's something that requires dimensional relief. Maggie, feel free to overrule me if you think I'm wrong.
Well, that, that sounds about right to me, Kelly. So what I'm going to suggest is that, you know, assuming the board gives you a conditional kind of approval this evening, we're not going to be spelling out the findings of fact and conclusions of law on a conditional, and we would just have the understanding that that issue would need to be resolved when you come back for the final approval, as well as any of these potential encroachment issues that, you know, appear on this aerial map. And I'm sure that they just haven't lined up properly, but we want to make sure that that's correct.
My thoughts exactly. Thanks, Maggie. Ron and Keith, do you guys have comments or questions?
This is Ron, I have none.
No, Keith, yeah, no, no questions, just glad to see a local entity expanding, and I'm supportive of everything.
Awesome. Okay, um, since this is just a pre-application hearing, we're not taking any action, but we've provided some guidance. Is there anything else the applicant wishes to ask the board or raise before we move on?
This is Kelly Fercassa. I don't think so unless any of the other people on with me have anything to add.
This is Colia. Mr. Wilkinson, have, would you like to comment further? Is that why your hand is raised, or was that an accident? I'm going to...
Yes, yes, this is Mike Wilkinson from Wood. I just wanted to throw in one more comment. So we, on this plan, we are showing a one-way exit to the right of our extended parking area. However, since submitting this, I've also been in contact with the Fire Marshal to ask about fire access for the site. And we were trying to determine feasibility of this access drive. And through speaking with him, a maximum grade per NFPA requirements, I think, was, was 5%. And, and we would be far, far exceeding that in the order of like 10 or 12%. So there is a, I guess, a kind of a good chance of us needing to eliminate that. And I don't know, I know this is a preliminary discussion. I don't know if it raises any concerns for the board at this time. Another request for the Fire Department was that we include a turnaround to not create a sort of dead-end condition without having connection there. So we are anticipating adding a turnaround at that lower-left elbow turn on the plan.
Mr. Wilkinson, do you, do you have the Fire Chief's comments in writing?
I don't believe I do. I think it was over via phone call.
Might be helpful when you come back to the board to have, you know, a letter from the Fire Chief or the authority having jurisdiction on that.
Yeah, he pointed me to the NFPA regulations, so that, that's where I confirmed and found the requirements that he was stating. Yeah, he pointed me to the NFPA regulations, so that, that's where I confirmed and found the requirements that he was stating.
Okay, any board members have questions about that? Slight, slight wrinkle?
Not Keith here, not at this time.
So just to be clear, sorry, Ron. Just to be clear, that entire exit would be eliminated, and essentially the parking lot would end without any connection to that unnamed access drive, and you'd have some kind of turnaround at the elbow as you indicated on that lower left-hand part of the lot.
Uh, yeah, potentially, yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, it doesn't look like we have any members of the public wishing to speak or ask questions. We have a few minutes if there's any interest in commenting on this application.
This is Talia. We don't have any hands, Emily.
Okay, thanks, Talia. Hearing none, I think we can move on. Thanks to the applicants, and we'll see you back here soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our next pre-application is for development plan review, photovoltaic solar energy system, Palmer Circle 3, AP 11 Lot 360, Palmer Circle, Eco Knox Renewables, Inc., applicant. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Scott Mills from Eco Knox Renewables. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start, and then I have my engineer from Wood Engineering. Who should be on the call too. So just a brief history of the site and the project. This site originally was part of the Reynolds farm, one continuous farm on both sides of 95, and back when 95 came through and split his farm in half. Years back, 95 gave him access to a tunnel under the existing 95, which later on 95 did additional work, and that tunnel was closed off for him to bring his equipment and cows through that tunnel. So the project currently has a right-of-way coming out of Palmer Circle. That's kind of just quick history on the project. The site's own manufacturing is 52.3 acres. The solar project takes about three acres of the 52.3 acres. This, the site disturbance is pretty minimal. There's a little bit of tree clearing on the north end of the array, but not much. The solar project, there's an existing solar project abutting it to the right. There's a second project being built to the northeast of this project. And there's currently a proposed 100-acre project to the south of this project. So basically, the, it's surrounded by solar, and it has 95 is, you know, the other abutter of this project. We submitted, we started this process last summer with Mr. Reynolds. We submitted documented the National Grid of September 2020, which we submitted to you guys, and we started an impact study of, in November of 2020. This project is currently in the interconnection process with National Grid. Originally, this project goes on the Chaysall Substation, which is completely filled up, and not accepting any more solar on this, on Chaysall Substation. They moved us over to Wood Substation, and we're currently sitting behind the 23-megawatt project to the south of us. And we have to wait for them to go through the interconnection process, which could take up to a year. It's currently an ISO. I'm pretty sure that project is an ISO, and we're on study right now. So that's kind of the quick overview of the project, and I have my engineer Jean on here if she wants to kind of get into the, the site and the plans itself.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Jean Hagerty, working for Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions. I think that Scott just gave you a pretty good overview of the project itself. Just a couple of points I'd like to to confirm. One is it is zoned manufacturing, the site, so that the design standards we're using are the manufacturing design standards. So 75% setback from frontage and 50 on the sides. So the preliminary layout has been put to reflect that and try to keep the project to the, as much as we could along the Route 95 corridor. Use the access road that would need to be expanded to a 20-foot gravel road coming from Palmer Circle in order to get access to the site and allow construction. The, when we looked at the layout, we decided that we could, from a transformer within the fence line to a riser pole along the access road would be underground construction, and then overhead wires from our riser out to Palmer Circle. The area inside the fence line is about 2.4 acres, maybe 2.5, and we can bring in the access road. Now, there's the total impact, as Scott said, is about three acres of a 52-acre site, so we're talking about about 6% impact. I think it's probably better, there are some wetlands going to the south side of the, of the project site. We've stayed well away from the wetlands, a couple of hundred feet. While doing a sidewalk, we saw a low drainage area, a ditch that's on 95. We also made sure we're at least 50 feet away from that ditch. Just don't think it's a jurisdictional wetland, but just to be conservative. So we tried to site this to the best place we could that wouldn't have any environmental impacts. It might be just easier to answer any questions you have than to have me go on. So, ask away.
Questions from the planning board?
This is Carolyn. Where's this access road?
The access road is from the top of Palmer Circle. There's a cul-de-sac there, and the access road comes around the top falls 95 down to the site.
That's not state-owned land that you're putting this road on?
He is a, the Reynolds have a right-of-way to get to his property from Palmer Circle since they cut off his access under the 95. We would have to get easement from, we'd have to get it, we'd have to get it either from them, from National Grid to put their equipment on that access.
I think it would be important for the planning board to see the confirmation of that easement because it doesn't look like there's any other way to access that property. And being that it's an access road, I, I would think it would also be, have to be supported for emergency services.
Yes, correct. We, we have, we do have a access road easement where, where the state carved out a piece of, a piece of land, so it wasn't in the 95 corridor, come through the property, and we could share that with the board.
Yeah, you can, you can include that in the plans going forward.
Correct.
Okay, and, and also with the validation, you know, documentation of the easement?
Correct. We've been trying to, we have the, the plans showing it. We've been trying to locate the actual right-of-way and easement that Mr. Reynolds had, but we would obviously have to find that and present that as we move forward.
Okay, another, another thought I had on this, considering the size of the land and your opportunity, I, is this small footprint that, that you're showing us just the beginning of something that would grow? Are you planning on extending this going forward?
We would not plan on extending it. They, they wanted to limit that area because the, Mr. Reynolds son wants to keep farming the rest of that site. And I think with the proposed council solar ordinance coming in the near future, that nothing else would be allowed anyway.
Okay, so it's your intention that the remaining property will remain as active farming?
That is, that is the intent of the Reynolds to keep farming the rest of the property.
Okay, all right. It's surrounded by solar. It's pretty interesting. At this point, I don't have anything further.
Yeah, and we have, we have done a project on the other side of 95 from Mr. Reynolds through the Farm Viability Act, a 250-coatt project that he currently has on the other side.
I'll just jump in here. This is Emily Shumshinya, just jumping in, since you brought up the, the project on the other side of the highway. It's a really visible project. I've heard feedback from members of the public that the screening of that project is, in their opinion, inadequate, and so I'd like to hear more about the screening plan for this project, and what extent this will be visible from 95 and, and any other roads and, and
We, we haven't addressed, we haven't looked into the screening thoroughly. There's some screening, there's buffers up to 95 right now, and all the, all the other abutting properties are solar. So there's really no residential views of this site. So we haven't addressed screening from the rest of the solar projects there around our project. But we can definitely look into it if, you know, screening, if we need to do some spot screening to 95, we could. You know, I've driven down 95, and I try to look in there. When you're going 65 miles an hour, it's hard to even kind of get a good view in there. So, but we could, we're not against screening if it's required.
I'll let, you know, when we open this up to public comment, I'll let the folks who have, you know, heard this concern from voice it themselves, but it's a concern we've heard in other projects as well. I just wanted to raise it early that screening is likely going to be an issue of concern for the board, even though it's just from 95 and not from abutting residential properties. That is something that members of this community have voiced to this board prior, and that we've adopted. We've listened to those concerns and passed that along to the applicants.
We can definitely address screening and do screening if required. There is some, there is some stuff there, but we could add some evergreen street, screening on that side of the project if we want to. It kind of slopes downhill too, so I think it would only be, you wouldn't have to do much to screen it.
Okay, I'll, I'll also let my other board members weigh in, but I think I would like to see screening options in the next version of this plan.
Okay, will do.
I'll go, it's John.
I'm sorry, John, go ahead. This is Carolyn, I'll speak by it.
Okay, Emily, thank you for bringing up the, the screening on the other side. I know that many of those are bevida, are brown. So I think it's not maintained. So I don't know what the maintenance plan is, and I, I see that there's a maintenance plan for this project, and with a screening that'll help. The, the only question that I really have, and I apologize if this is, if this sounds a little bit snarky, but it just, it struck me. On page two of the, the, I guess, the proposal, it says that the project has been designed to be a minimum of 50 feet away from any potential wetlands. Therefore, is it assumed that a wet, therefore it is assumed that a wetlands delineation and wetlands permitting through the, through right end will not be required. I, I personally don't think, I know that's on a hill. I don't think it's wetlands, but how do we know that it's 50 feet from the wetlands if we don't know where the wetlands are?
Rest in Virginia.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, I think we did have our wetland scientist walk the site, and we were particularly looking at the brook and the distances from there. He did, as he was walking, it see that a small wet area to the left, which looks like it's a drainage ditch along the highway. And we probably will ask DEP to take a look with, DEM to take a look with us to see if they, if that's jurisdictional. So we would have to set up flags along that site to make sure that we are at least 50 feet from that wetland. Yep.
Thank you.
This is Carolyn. I'd like to share comments on the screening that we just walked past. I believe, I distinctly recall Palmer Circle 1, the people managing that project telling the planning board that you cannot see it from 95. And if you were doing 100 miles an hour, you're still gonna see it. So I think you need to take a real hard look at what we're asking you, because if we can see Palmer Circle 1, we can see what you're putting up. So it shouldn't be taken for granted, and I think the 95 corridor is what's bringing you into Hope Valley, and that's what we're trying to protect. When you go down 95 north, you can see Palmer Circle 1, and when you go down 95 south, you could see the Reynolds farm. So we're, we're asking you to be serious about that, or take the comment very seriously, because it's important to the residents that we protect the rural character of our community. And that excludes whatever land belongs to the state or an island. Thank you.
Yes, we will look at the screening on the corridor, and we would address the screening.
Emily, I'd like to throw my two cents in.
Please.
While we're talking about screening, I don't mean to sound like I'm coming down on anybody, but I've heard from a lot of people in town, I mean, I've lived in this town for 69 years. I know a lot of folks. And they're more or less focusing on the one, on the Reynolds farm on the opposite side of 95. And that seems to be the poster child for, don't do this. You know, there's dead trees, it's just, it seems to be, I don't want to use the word neglected, but there's, there's something that's not sitting well with the residents. So just to kind of bring you up to speed on that, maybe a little bit of attention over there. Spew that up a little bit. It would make everybody a lot happier about anything else that's going on. But that's just my opinion.
We can chat with the investor that owns the project on the other side of the street. Eco Knox does not own it, and we can ask them, you know, when that project was approved, I'm sure there's some conditions on maintenance and keeping the landscaping intact.
Okay, thank you.
I think to the larger point, for all of the solar projects we're talking about, we're talking about a maintenance plan. And maintenance plans include the screening. If you're going to use planting, then that's part of the process. And that's a general comment from me.
Thanks, Carolyn. Thanks, Ron. And John.
Keith here, speak for a minute.
Go ahead, Keith.
I just want to say that this project has a, a long way to go for me to be able to support it, beginning with the, the screening that you're all echoing and onwards to maintenance plan and decommissioning, which we're not even anywhere close to talking about that yet, and and then the, the public commentary that's coming up, and I'd probably be surprised to hear in one member of the public that supports this project. So those are, a lot of the factors that are still open for me before I'm able to support this project.
Thanks, Keith. Um, I'll just also, this is Emily again. I'll just also throw in another kind of overarching comment. I think a lot of folks in reviewing and hearing about solar projects in town, the last thing they want to hear is, well, there's already solar there, so we can put more solar next to it, and it's no big deal. We don't like to hear the existence of solar being used as an excuse to just put in more solar. We're, you know, inundated with these proposals and projects, and each project stands on its own and is evaluated on its own, but we're getting to the point where cumulative impacts of solar on our community are of concern to folks. So I just wanted to raise that as an ongoing concern of this board and of likely some of the comments you might hear from the public on, on this topic, and express it as my own personal concern as a resident as well.
Okay, this is Carolyn. One of the Okay, this is Carolyn. One of the comments that was made earlier was that the Chase Hill Station is at capacity, and this project had to be redirected to another location. That is only on the heels of what Emily just commented. Maybe the residents are tired of it, but the community is already being maxed out. So rushing to put in a solar project because the community is being maxed out at these transfer stations is, and it's one of the thoughts that ran through my mind, that it's, it's, it's a disappointing place to be. But I appreciate why you want to put this project in. And I understand the sentiment that it's already surrounded by solar, you know, what's, what's another small project. I, I can appreciate that sentiment. But on the other side of it, Emily's references here point to the fact that even National Grid is saying this community's had enough. Thank you.
And, and, you know, we, we didn't rush this process through very quickly. We started this process last summer, and it's kind of evolving with National Grid because of the large projects that are, you know, in South County. So we just kind of fell within that big group of projects, and we, when we go in the queue behind it, we're stuck with them. So that, that's why I was just referencing about Chase Hill and the Wood River.
Additional planning board comments? Okay, hearing none. I think we have, I've seen a few hands go up as the conversation has progressed. I think we can hear some public input on this application. We have a few minutes for that.
This is Kalia. You've got it, Emily. First person, Elaine, please state your name for the record after unmuting yourself.
Elaine Calderon. I'm the Hopkinton representative to the Woodpocktuck Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council. And I have a question for the engineer. Can I ask that?
Sure.
I was wondering, what is the distance from the outermost edge of disturbance that is closest to the Knatchit Brook? Like, what is the closest distance from disturbance to that brook?
I think it's about 400 feet. I'd have to measure it. If you go to the very southwest corner of the array, to the middle, to the, to the upland bank, I think that's about 400 feet.
Okay, thanks. Knatchit Brook bisects this property, and that is one of the federally designated tributaries in the Woodpocktuck National Wild and Scenic River System. And the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council has a responsibility to preserve, protect, and enhance the special environmental, cultural, and recreational values of the rivers according to the stewardship plan, which was adopted by the Hopkinton Town Council and supported by the planning board. So the stewardship plan recommends minimizing disturbances around these federally designated rivers and tributaries. And we would encourage the planning board to address any potential impacts to this river for this particular proposal. And additionally, according to the Rhode Island Wildlife Action Plan, there might be a high-value, high-vulnerability area on this parcel, and I think that should be investigated as, as the planning board goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, can I, can I comment on that quick? I mean, when, when we laid out the solar, we tried to minimize where, you know, minimize the project so that they could farm the rest of the site, so the site would stay the way it's been farmed. And this site is, is a manufacturing, it's in a manufacturing zone, so there could be a manufacturing facility on the site. I think doing a, you know, a relatively small project like we're doing and farming the rest of it is, you know, is, is a better option than manufacturing, I guess, when I look at it. It's a cornfield right now. He's basically, it's a cornfield that the rest of it is.
This is Kalia. There are a couple of other members of the public. The next person, last four digit, 8222. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Joe Morrow from Old Depot Road. I'm very familiar with this area. My best friend from high school purchased the 65 Palmer Circle property, where there is solar on that property now. I was concerned from the initial comment, when the question was asked about the access road, and your initial answer was that the owner had a right of way to that road. When you were pushed a little bit further, the comment was brought out about the right of way with 95. But that was, I'm assuming permitted, obviously, long before solar was intended. So I don't know if the state would give a right of way for that project now. And the reason why I say that, as I mentioned, my best friend owns that other property. He researched it before he purchased his property, and told me last week that he's under the impression that is state-owned property. So that's a big concern of mine. I was on his property before solar was even considered, and I was on it after solar was installed. You can definitely see that lower field. There is no doubt about that. And obviously, you can see it in either direction on 95. The other concern I have is the width of that road. It is a very narrow road. When you come to that cul-de-sac at Palmer Circle, you have to make such a dramatic left turn to get into that property. It would be difficult for a full-size pickup truck, I believe, to get in there, never mind an emergency vehicle to get in there. It is such a sharp, sharp corner. The other comment I want to make about the buffering for the Reynolds property on Main Street, when that was first, and I use the word loosely buffered, I went down there and I measured the plantings that they put. The bulk of the plantings were about three foot from the ground. Then you had two foot of just the stem. So you had a total of five foot. And that was never, again, in my opinion, that was never properly buffed the way that that should have been. But I do have a concern about the right of way, because you look at 95, it is a very sharp incline to get up to the top, and it looks like there was a state fence that was put up there. And then, again, you have this very narrow road that, and I don't know, there was a comment made about widening that road. I don't know if that can be done. I'd be curious to see where the, the property line is there. But I would ask for full transparency in the future, please, to, to state the facts as well as you know them, and to, and to be upfront about it, because, again, I'm concerned with the first comment about the owner has the right of way. And I, I have to question that. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Can I respond to that quickly? So we do have the plan that show, when they, when they took his tunnel away, we do have the plan that they showed they carved out the piece. And obviously, to come back, we would have to, you know, find those documents and discuss with the state and come back, we wouldn't come back to you without knowing we had a access into the site for National Grid or ourselves. So we do understand that. We're already at preliminary. So we know we have, we know we have work to do there before we would come back.
This is Emily. I'll just, I'll just weigh in. It sounds like the board also agreed, you know, some additional detail on the plans, the next phase of plans, the next, the next draft that delineate some of these features rights of way and so forth, would be really critical.
Yeah, we agree with that.
All right, this is Kalia. Next, oh, sorry, John, did you want to say something?
Yeah, this is John. I just wanted to add, similar to the last applicant, if it's possible to get something from the, the fire and safety official in writing to the fact that this is sufficient access to meet the emergency needs, I think that would
Correct. And we would, we would have to get their approval anyway. So we would do, I was going to mention it also, we'd have to fire mark, we'd have to make that far, so the fire trust could get down to the site.
Thank you.
This is Kalia, next member of the public, Harvey. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Harvey Beaufort of the Conservation Commission. I have considered this area along I-95 to be everything that we could ever want in the way of a scenic highway. And I love looking at the fields and seeing the activity there. And I want the farming to continue. And I think that a few acres of solar is just the way we have to deal with that kind of an issue. It's a manufacturing zone. I would rather see and hope that a few acres of solar leads to the majority of that roughly 20-acre field continuing as a farm field far into the future, past my lifetime. I, I would like to point out that when you talk about screening and the issues, and, and George Reynolds, one acre over on Route 3 on the other side of 95, as a poster child for what we don't want, I will say that the town count, the town told George basically what we wanted. It was, it was early in the process, and we probably didn't tell him very well what should have happened over there. But I can tell you, my own personal opinion is, if we didn't have a fence, and we didn't have those silly little arbor bodies stuck around the perimeter, it would look a whole lot better if those, if those solar panels were just out there in the middle of an open field. Don't, don't you all agree that it's, it's the, the fence in this, in the silly little arbor body that make it look ridiculous? And so I'm a big opponent, opponent of using chain link fence. There's other fencing options, farm-type fences that you barely see, that come up six, seven, eight feet, whatever the, the requirements are going to be, that would make it a whole lot better. And there are times when making it blend into the landscape means making it look like it's part of the farm field more and less trying to put silly little arbor body out around the perimeter. So there may be some other solutions that could be applied so that we can have some pride when we go up 95 and, and look over at, 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 that, that section of this probably providing electricity for a couple hundred houses. And with the issue of Knatchit Brook, I would much rather have some solar panels sitting up there with proper methods of infusing the ground, the rain into the groundwater and such than having houses or some industrial-type development up there that would endanger Knatchit Brook a whole lot more than the solar panels would. So that's kind of my thoughts from a conservation standpoint. Thank you.
This is Carolyn. Can I, can I comment, please?
Sure.
Okay, I, I agree with Harvey. He's talking about aesthetics, how pretty it is. We're decorating. So the decorations for the Reynolds Farm on the other side of 95 were premature. Hopkinton didn't quite understand what they were doing. Now the planning board understands what they're doing. So the recommendations for better fencing and screening, so it blends in, is great. But the way the project on, on the 95 southbound roadway looks is, you don't see a farm, you see solar, and then you see abandoned vehicles in a field, and you look for more of that. So when we talk about aesthetics and improving things, and the way things look, and the way Hopkinton's residents want to wave that flag, these are the things that are happening over there. So if we can learn by that and promote better aesthetics and decorate better, that's what the planning board is talking about. And that's, that's about it. And it happens, we have these discussions with every project. And it's not a matter of fencing for this project. It's a matter of hiding it from the Route 95 northbound traffic, so you don't see it as an attachment to Palmer Circle One. Palmer Circle One is going to take many, many years for that to be hidden. That's not what we're shooting for anymore, for any solar, solar projects going forward. Thank you.
This is Kalia, next member of the public. Sharon, please state your name for the record.
Hello, Kalia.
Yes.
Okay, this is, this is Sharon Davis. I, I wanted to ask the developer, he stated that Chase Hill substation was full, and this project had to move to a different substation. I wanted to know what the name of that substation was.
It got moved from Chase Hill to Wood River.
Wood River. Okay. And, and I wanted to, to also verify you said that, that you're in a one and a half year queue?
The, there is a project in front of us that is 23 megawatts that is in a ASO study through National Grid right now, and we have to wait for them to come out of the study, because they're in front of us in queue before they can finish up our impact study. Typical ASO studies are six to nine months.
Can you, can you explain, this is Emily, can you explain ASO study, what that is?
Transmission level study? Not, not, it's, it's a transmission level studies. Any product of a meg, one megawatt going through National Grid is required to do a transmission level study through ISO new England. So we're, we're behind that big project in queue, so we have to wait for their study to finish before, or they'll finish our study. So, so the Chase Hill substation is maxed out, and there'll be no more solar going on Chase Hill.
Is there, is there a contact with National Grid that could tell us which, which solar projects are going to this Chase Hill substation?
I could share a link with someone, the council, it's a public link, and you can look at the, all the projects in queue and where the substations are, where they were submitted, a status of them. I could, I could send a link to Jim Lampfear that shows you the interconnection queue of all the products in the queue and the status of them and where they are.
Perfect. I would like that. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Kalia, this is Carolyn again. Jim, when you have that link, can you please share it with us?
Will do, Carol. Yes.
Thank you.
The public link to National Grid, so it's.
Next member.
Chair, may I ask one quick question of the applicant? Has, has, is this, is this project coming in through the renewable energy growth program?
It will be, but you, we, you can't apply for a renewable energy growth tariff until the project has a completed impact study or interconnection service agreement.
Right. Thank you.
This is Kalia, next member of the public. Eric, please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Eric Bibler. In part, I'd like to echo some of the concerns that have already been raised with, particularly about the screening from, from Route I-95. The planning board may recall that a couple of meetings ago, in a different context, you heard from Peter Conopask, who was on the planning board from 1980 to 1992. Peter was one of the people in Hopkinton who authored the original comprehensive plan, and also the first revision to the comprehensive plan. And Peter spoke very eloquently about, you know, that entire process of preserving the rural character of the town. But he also spoke about Lincoln Chafee, you know, and the efforts that Chafee and others made to really treat the entrance to Rhode Island, you know, the, the, the entire corridor, you know, coming over the border from Connecticut with a great deal of care, you know, and respect. And spoke about how Lincoln Chafee, I forgot the name of it, but I think it was something about, referring referred to this effort to maintain this green corridor as you came into into the state and in, and especially into Hopkinton because that's how you enter the state. So there seems to be this tendency of disregarding or devaluing the, the view from Route 95. And I, I really support all the members of the planning board that are really paying close attention to that. And I think that that's really important. I also echo the concerns of Elaine Calderon about all of the brooks and tributaries of our wild and scenic river system. Conachet Brook is important for that. I think that, you know, 50, 50 foot setback, you know, could be very inadequate. And water flows downhill. And when we get these flooding events, you know, all this sediment is ultimately deposited in the waterways because that's where the most point is. So I think you should be really cautious about that. No one has said anything about decommissioning. So I would just like to focus on attachment G, which the applicant has attached to his proposal here. I think this applicant has done a relatively complete job of laying out all the decommissioning costs except for one. In section 2.4, there's a reference to either, I don't know, carting away, disposing of and/or recycling the panels. Ironically, just exactly one year ago today on April 7th, 2020, in connection with the Revity proposal, and I would encourage everyone to hang on to this document. Revity hired an outfit called We Recycle Now. It's an accredited, an accredited solar recycling company. And they estimated in this estimate for Revity that the cost of recycling a solar panel is 77 cents per pound. In the We Recycle Now estimate, their panels were 57 pounds. Now this developer tonight says there are 2,962 panels. They kind of gave a, I guess a round number estimate of 50 pounds per panel, but I think that's probably low. When I do the math, that's 148,000 pounds of panels. And if you have to pay 77 cents per panel to recycle them, your cost of recycling alone would be $114,000 for decommissioning. I can't emphasize how important I think this is. I believe the recycling estimate you have in front of you is $33,000. But if you had to recycle these panels, it would be $114,000. So that's kind of somewhere over the horizon if you end up approving this thing. But it's really important because the regime around the world, you know, increasingly in Europe and California and other places, authorities are mandating recycling. We don't even know whether solar energy will be viable 25 or 30 years from now. We didn't use the internet 30 years ago. You know, we really can't predict. And when it comes to set this decommissioning reserve, I think the town has to protect itself against the possibility that regulations might require in five years or 10 years that panels can't be put in landfills that have to be recycled. So you do have a document, you know, from a professional recycler. I just want to ask that you, you know, if the time comes, pay close attention to that. And let's just make sure the town is protected, you know, and that this reserve is adequate. And, and then there's also lastly, the issue of cumulative effect. This neighborhood, this section of town is completely riddled with solar panels. And one thing I'm really tired of hearing, you know, and we heard it tonight from the chairman of the conservation committee who actually pushed back against every concern about conservation that was expressed and spoke in favor of development. But I'm really tired of hearing that we should turn a blind eye to three acres of solar panels because that's the price of saving 20 acres of farmland. I don't know about you, but if I drive past 23 acres of land and three acres of solar panels and 20 acres remains farmland, it really changes the way I feel about that 23 acres. I can't unsee the three acres of solar panels. So I urge you to reject that argument and to, you know, deal with this three acre project on its merits. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any additional comments?
No, this is Talia. And Carolyn, I accidentally muted your phone. So just press star nine. I apologize.
So just on a quick, on a last call, a couple of quick comments. You know, the Reynolds are trying to do this to have income committed to the farm so they can keep farming that site. So the alternative is, is, you know, to, you know, a manufacturing facility over there or something else, which obviously would be a lot worse than three acres of solar and 20 acres of farming. I mean, that's why they're doing this. As far as the decommissioning, you know, obviously the decommissioning, everything we is, you know, preliminary decommissioning estimates, which would be reviewed by the town engineer when we do this. And you guys have a lot, have a lot of them come from you, but you know, the, the state Rhode Island actually has some bills in place for decommissioning of, and, and, and solar recycling. Solar recycling in, in Europe is a big, there's a lot of recycling going on now in Europe right now. They can recycle up to 99% of the module. California's first solar is doing it in California and all their solar panels, they recycle themselves. He's referring to one facility that they, that this price came from. There's multiple facilities starting to opening up and the recycling. Because you know, it's, it's, there's so much solar going in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New Jersey, actually not much Connecticut, New Jersey that, you know, the facilities will open up, you know, eventually a solar recycling facility will open up in the Northeast to handle the demand in the Northeast. California's already doing it and Germany's doing it and overseas is doing a lot of it. And you know, the recycling they're doing now is, is much better, you know, of how much they can recycle of a panel than they used to in the past. The technologies are changing constantly how they do it. So there is, you know, they can, they salvage aluminum, there's a lot of salvage value in it and there will be more in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is Talia. Carolyn, please press star six. Star nine is just to raise your hand. I misspoke. I apologize.
Want to make sure that Carolyn can be heard if she has something that she needs to say. Okay. It looks like she's unmuted now.
All right. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks Talia. Because this is pre-application, there's no vote to take and no other action to take. The board has expressed its ideas. We've heard from the public. I think we're all set to proceed.
Okay. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Emily, if I could just interject, Jim Lambfair, town planner. I just want to mention that normally under development plan review, the planning board selects from one of three options, either no further review necessary, we come back for development plan review, or we bump this up to a major land development project. Now, as we've done in the past, because we have a solar ordinance that we've interpreted such that when no zone changes are required, that it mandates development plan review. And the way that was interpreted is that they're going to come back for continued development plan review. So I just want to state that for clarity, what we're going to be doing going forward. Because there's no, there's no further notice required under development plan review ordinance for this. We, we had a notice for tonight. And second, you know, one thing you want to think about is, do we want to suggest to the applicant peer review by Crossman Engineering? I would, I would assume that at some point the board would want Crossman to take a look at this. They can, I suppose we could request that when they come back to us with the next iteration of this plan. Or we could give them a heads up as if they want to volunteer and, and get Crossman on board early. They could, they could do that too. So those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Jim. In terms of the decision about, you know, the three points waived from further review, continue with development plan review or review as major land development project, I'm curious what board members think. I think that a previous project, it was actually just mentioned a minute ago, Revity, similar situation where it was already zoned manufacturing. It was a fairly large project. We reviewed it under development plan review and were able to work with the applicant to ensure we had adequate time for review and thoroughness. Really the only thing, the only major difference is that notice and public hearing phase with major land development that we would not have at our disposal for development plan review. So I'm curious what other board members think about these options before us.
This is Carolyn. Maggie, can you give us some guidance? I'm, I believe that we need to continue with the development plan review. But I'd like your guidance on this.
Well, as Jim has explained, that certainly is one of the options available to you. So I'm not sure that I have, I don't have a legal recommendation other than the fact that, you know, that's one of the options that's available to you. I think it depends upon what the board's preference is for moving forward.
For the boards, the board has two options tonight. Major, master plan review, major development plan review.
It would be, it would be, yeah, major, major development, which then has master plan level and then preliminary plan level and final. You may find that unnecessarily repetitive. And you have to recall that within those, that there are very specific timeframes mandated by state statutes. However, there's also a timeframe set forth in your development plan review, which maybe depending on how quickly somebody goes through master plan, it's not likely that they would get through that any quicker than they would development plan review.
And I don't know if I can speak now, but whatever process we go on, I know you guys are very busy with other big projects. We're not in a big rush because we're stuck for a little bit. So we're definitely flexible on time and, you know, when we come back, we can come back when you guys free up or not in a monster rush.
Thanks for that. Maybe in the same, if, if other board members want to speak up about the Crossman review as well, I will just weigh in and say, I think we would want Crossman to review this application package. And if the next submittal by the applicant comes together to us, to the board on our agenda with the Crossman review completed, that's fantastic.
We, we would agree to do the Crossman review.
Does anyone disagree with continuing with development plan review and bundling the next phase with the Crossman review? Okay. I'm not hearing any disagreement.
No, no, this, this is Carolyn. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. But I would like to know that the easements with the state of Rhode Island have been satisfied so that Crossman can review those as well. I think that's an efficient.
Yeah. We would not come back, we would not come back to you without that issue being resolved.
Okay. But I, what I, what I, what I would like is that Crossman has the opportunity to review those, that documentation and that validation as well. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We'll need some time to do that. That's what I'm saying. To go through the state, it's going to take us a bit of time to sort all this out. So we probably won't be back for a while.
We have nothing but time.
This, this is attorney hoping. So we're at pre-app right now anyway. And so the whole development plan review doesn't kick off until a complete application comes in and Jim certifies it complete.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks Carolyn. Thanks, Mr. Mills, Ms. Hagerty. I think we're all set here tonight.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. We made it through our five items. We're on to the solicitor's report.
I have nothing to report this evening, other than the fact that the Revity matter has been continued once again from April to May. And I will be prepared to represent the board at that matter at that time, assuming that it does not get continued again.
Okay. Leonard's report.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes. Carolyn.
I, I'm sorry. So I have questions about the position of that project. Since the town council has approved activity at the former boneyard, the planning board and I in particular, were very concerned about the position of the well. So since that facility is going to be reopened and active, the Revity project has to confirm their allowance of footage around the well that is on that property. It was up in the air conversation that we had. If they open up the restaurant, then we'll have to talk about where the well is going to be relocated. The well can't be relocated. So I'd like to know where that process stands.
This is Talia. Sharon Davis would like to weigh in. She's on the town council. Would you allow her?
Yeah. Great.
Hello.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay. What was presented at the town council was that Little Roadie Lobster, Little Lobster Roadie has a easement with the owners of the other property that they can use the well. So that is, that is what they presented when they, when they applied for licensing. So they're not going to relocate the well. They have an easement to be able to use the well.
This is Emily. If I remember correctly, we had a condition of approval that if the well were to, was going to be used and active, that there would be no panels located on the site of the well. Is that correct?
That's right. That's what I remember. So it, it, it is in your bailiwick, but at this, at this point, Little Roadie will be, supposedly has an easement to use that well.
So that condition in Revity's approval would be activated essentially?
Mm-hmm. I think, but you know.
Is that what you're getting at, Carolyn?
Yeah. And I want to know how we monitor that and manage it going forward.
Didn't you sort of, didn't you have a certain amount, distance from the panels? Or that the, that the panels had to be from the well? And didn't they say that that would have to be, I don't know if it's D E M, but it's some government requirement of how close the panels could be to the, to the well?
Yes. Yeah. But Maggie, maybe you should chime in.
Yep. This is Maggie. The, the Department of Health regulates wells and distances of structures and septic systems and other things from the well. And it depends upon the type of well that it is, whether it's a community well, a transient well. There's, there's a whole set of regulations on that. well, there's, there's a whole set of regulations on that. I don't recall the specific item on the well, just vaguely, because of course, I did sit through the month to month of the proceedings. I did prepare, of course, the, the defense of the appeal. So what I would suggest to you is that I would take a look at that, since I'll be reviewing those files in preparation for the May argument. I'll review those files. I'll look to your land evidence records to see if there's an easement on file, and I can report back to you as to what I think the impact is, if any, of this new restaurant.
This is Jim Lamphier, town planner. I'm going to go off my memory now, and I seem to recall that there were a couple of alternate plans presented by the applicant there. And I think it all hinges on Department of Health approval. If the Department of Health has any issues with that, that they would alter the panels in some fashion to accommodate Department of Health. So I don't know if we, I don't know if the Department of Health has actually weighed in on this at this point, but depending upon what they say, there would be a wellhead protection area around there, or if they had issues with it. If they didn't have any issues, if they had to move the well, then they would put panels where it is. So I'm not sure where that stands right now.
This is Talia. Do you have anything else to add, Sharon?
No, that was, that was what I remembered. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Sharon.
Okay, this is Carolyn. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get some finite clarification on that matter. And for some reason, I'm thinking was 200 feet, a little 200-foot buffer around the well, but, but clarification on that would make me feel better about the situation that we're in. Thank you very much.
This is Maggie. Yeah, I am anticipating, Carolyn, that there would be more than adequate time to address this issue. You know, if the, if one of the parties is not happy with the outcome at the zoning quarter of review, there is the, you know, right to further appeals in the Superior Court. And, you know, based upon what I think would be a backlog there, would probably be a, you know, 18 months to two-year process, potentially. So let's, but I will certainly investigate this initial question and get back to you, hopefully by the beginning, at the next meeting, or if not, the one after.
Because you're a superstar. Thank you, thank you all, thank you.
This is Talia. Sharon would like to speak again.
Sharon, go ahead, Sharon.
Hi, this is, just to let you know, Little Roadie's going to start May 1st. So I hope that the, that that stuff can be resolved. That's all I'm telling you. Thank you.
And thanks, Carolyn, for raising that. Okay. Moving on to planner's report.
Yes, in your packet, I provide you with the administrative subdivision that I approved. It was for AP 3 Lot 5E and AP 23 Lot 43, located at 40 and 56 Tomacog Road. Kenneth L. and Laura Taylor are the owners of AP 35 Lot 5E, and Raymond and Catherine Taylor, AP 23 Lot 43. That was a precursor to the minor subdivision that you folks approved tonight. It was a movement of a lot line to, in order to have a larger lot from which the two lots tonight were created. So it was a pretty straightforward subdivision, and you have it in your packet.
Correspondence and updates. Got eight items received this month. Is there any discussion or questions from board members on these items? Okay, hearing none. Is there anything else I need to do about correspondence and updates?
Just note for the record that you received them and they're placed on file.
Great. We will note for the record that we received these. Thanks to everyone who cares enough to submit letters to the planning board, and they're on file. Public forum.
This is Talia. No hands.
No hands. Okay, the date of our next regular meeting is May 5th, 2021.
Emily, if I could interject, Jim Lamphier, town planner, I was wondering if the board might want to consider having two dates, two meetings in the month of May. And I, I say this because with, with the projects that have continued this evening, along with some other projects that I anticipate coming to the board, we're going to have, we're going to have quite a packed agenda for the May 5th meeting, which I, I doubt we're going to get through. And so I don't know if you might want to have, you know, set up a second meeting for May, so we can get through some of these applications. Otherwise, we're going to just, it's going to be tough getting through these things, continuing from month to month. We're going to have quite a backlog.
Yeah, noted. Do you think, Jim, this would require some coordination probably, but do you think a second meeting in May could be dedicated to one of these complex projects that we didn't hear tonight? I'm just wondering, you know, if we can limit it, if it's an extra meeting, if we can limit it to like two hours or something, to take the sting out of the extra meeting, but give a dedicated chunk of time to a project that requires our attention? I'm curious what others.
Okay, well, keep in mind now that the two items that we continued tonight were continued to date certain. So those two are going to May 5th.
Okay.
They're going to be advertised as such. Now, there will be others. Now, I, I'm a little bit hesitant. We have so many projects that I'm, I don't know if we can get through them by dedicating one of those special meetings to one project. I almost think that we have to have multiple projects on both of those meetings. That, that's the number that I see. I mean, I, I know I've been sounding the alarm bell for months now, and quite frankly, we've been pretty much fortunate up until this point. But I just see, I just see a tremendous amount of work on the horizon here, and we're going to have to buckle down and, and do our best to get through this expeditiously as we can. Otherwise, otherwise, we're just going to have a tremendous amount of things continued from one month to the next. And we'll have to put people in a queue, and when we get to them, we get to them. We'll have to ask them for continuances, possibly. I mean, I just don't, you know, and I, and I know, I mean, it's a tough position to be in, because I know that a lot of these projects, you're right, Emily, just one of these could consume an entire evening. There's no, no doubt about it. They're, they're large projects. So I don't know that there's an easy way to get through these things, or a quick way to get through these things. You know, we have, we have to do our due diligence on each and every one of these applications. So I don't think, we're going to have to have multiple applications on multiple meetings. If you, if you want to take that route and, and go like a special meeting for a particular project, I can, you know, you know what's before us as well as I do. I don't want to start mentioning project names, but we, we could probably meet one, one night a week, or two nights a week, and give everything a full night. It's, I don't know, it's, it's really, it's not an easy situation that we face right now, to be honest with you. It's not, I don't delight in it, but some way, we have to get through this work and get it done one way or another. So I'll leave it up to the board, whatever you want to do. I'll meet every night with you if you want, I don't care, but I just see a tremendous amount of work in front of us, and I don't know how to get it done, although outside of having additional meetings, so.
Thanks, Carolyn. Every night, I'll pass. But extra, a couple of extra meetings might be okay. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Jim, if you were wearing those ruby slippers, and you could say, this is the best-case scenario for Jim and Talia, what would you recommend specifically?
I would click them three times and get back to Kansas as fast as I could. That's what I would do. It's time to leave Oz.
Then let's get a photo of you in those slippers.
I saw them. I was at the Smithsonian, and I saw them firsthand, so, you know.
Wow.
I don't think I fit in them. But anyway, well, as I just said, we, you know, we have two meetings, we know we have two projects coming that we continue tonight. So I would leave them alone. And then I would try to fit the, I mean, if I knew two, if I knew that we had two meetings available, I would try to fit these in where I could into each meeting, what's most appropriate. So again, now, I've been telling everyone who's been asking for what's on the next agenda, I tell them, because, because I, because it's awful tough for me, I have things penciled in my head, okay? That are on, but I can't, I can't tell anybody for certain what's going to be on the next May agenda. I got about 10, I got about a dozen things penciled in my calendar on my desk for May 5th. And I know we're not going to get all that work done. So I, what I need is, I need the flexibility, to be honest with you, to put these things in appropriate spots, so that we can get through these things as best we can. So I need that flexibility to run the department that way. So we know, we know we got two, hey, let's face it, we got two controversial projects coming up on May 5th that we just continued. They're both going to be advertised, I mean, one was, one was, one was advertised already, continued to a date certain, one's going to be re-advertised. So that's kind of locked in stone. You know as well as I do, one of those could take an entire night, two of them can certainly take an entire night. They have a full presentation to make in both cases. So I'll try to squeeze a couple of simple things on there, a couple of maybe minor subdivisions if I have them. I don't like to keep my residential customers on the hook too long, because, you know, I mean, we can't live in the world of solar forever. We have to get out of this someday. And we're working our way through it, and we'll be out of it someday. But, so I guess my long-winded answer is, I need flexibility to do what I need to do to give you folks a manageable agenda. And I, and I don't know how that's going to shake out now.
Jim, this is Talia.
Here's my question.
Been raising her hand like this a little bit, so I think she's been wanting to interject, but didn't want to cut you off, so.
Let Maggie go.
So, thank you, Jim, Madam Chair, members of the board. I, I've got a couple of thoughts and maybe a couple of suggestions. One is, this evening, when we heard from the Kamoli project, that didn't really sound, honestly, that it was ready for primetime. It sounded like they needed to negotiate some kind of easement, or covenant, or something with the Conservation Commission.
No, land trust, but it's okay.
Okay, and so the, while it was certainly continued to a date certain this evening, my suggestion is that, that Jim could have a conversation with Ms. Rocha to find out what is the viability of the likelihood of that actually being ready to go forward on May 5th. And put that aside until we get the answer. I would also suggest, if it, at the risk of probably being run out of town, maybe we should start on May 5th at 6:00, as opposed to 7:00, if people are available, and give a three-hour slot to the Stone Ridge that was ready to go tonight, but for the notice issue. Then you could put a couple of small things on that agenda, and then pick another night, perhaps another Wednesday in May, just not the last one, please. I'm conflicted for that. And have a second night, and if after conversations with Ms. Rocha, the other solar item is ready to go for that date, they could be put on with a couple more of the small things. Again, maybe the same kind of lineup, like start at 6:00, bang out three hours, okay, we're done with you for tonight, and then maybe we can make some headway on these major things. Because, you know, hearing an hour of a major project one month, and an hour of the major project the next month, I think is difficult, not only for the applicant, which is not as important, but I think it's more difficult for the board to maintain continuity, and to understand, and to be able to ask the questions that you want, without being rushed out, because the next application is waiting. So those are just my thoughts for you to consider.
This is Carolyn. I, I have a question for Jim, too. If the board agreed that two weeks from tonight, we could give two hours of a meeting, do you have agenda items that we could work through?
Two weeks from tonight.
So that would be, this is Talia, that would be the 21st of this month, Carolyn?
Yep. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I know there's a lot of process involved in, in actually getting things on the agenda. So do, you know, like Maggie had those recommendations, but is there any opportunity for us to bring, we don't have to do an entire meeting, we could do an hour and a half or two hours. Do we have an agenda that could fill that time, that we could get through fairly for the applicants?
The big concern with that is the, whether the applicants would have sufficient time to do any notice requirements.
Right.
So Jim would have to look at his list of things to see what needs public notice and what doesn't.
No, that, that's correct, Maggie, Jim Lamphier, town planner. I don't think, I, I kind of know what's in my hopper. I got a couple of projects in my head that would require notice. It would be, I, I don't think I'd be ready to go with anything two weeks from tonight.
And you couldn't go with anything three weeks from tonight?
I might be able to push something three weeks from tonight.
I, I will not be available three weeks from tonight. The fourth, fourth Wednesday of the month, I am always otherwise engaged. I apologize.
Okay, so what I'm thinking then, is that we're talking about our first meeting in May, and then something after that, and that would give some relief to Jim and Talia. Is that what we're talking about, Jim?
I think that's the most likely scenario, yes.
Yeah. Tell us what you want.
May 19th, which is two weeks after the 5th.
I, I think that's, that, that's fine, I guess, we could live with that.
Hi, this is John, just wanted to, Jim, I don't know what the backlog is, but does it make sense, while we're doing this, to also pencil in June 16th? And if there's nothing to put on that, then we cross it off. But, I mean, given that, given that these, some of these are likely to be continued, I, I mean, I don't know, unless, unless two extra hours is going to empty the backlog, I think it might make sense to just plan ahead a little bit more.
Yeah, you know, I, I think Maggie threw out some really good ideas. It's, and again, John, you just said it, a lot of these things, that no matter how much time we give one of these projects, they're going to come back again. So it's the continual, I mean, given, given three hours to a project is, sounds good, if we could dispense with it in that time. Like, there's no guarantee that we can. So I mean.
And, you know, tacking into that, not only is the three hours sufficient, but you give me a stack of paper this high, and I'm weak to review it and digest a lot of technical stuff, it's, it's, it's a challenge. So if, if they could be spaced out.
It's frightening, guys, come on.
Yeah, so, I mean, if they could be spaced out, I think it'd be easier on the board to, to really grasp what we're, we're trying to read and what, what we're making decisions on.
Yeah, Keith is here, just another thought that, you know, selfishly, for myself and, and everyone else, that, you know, Talia puts all this paperwork together, Jim, you're, you're heading all this up, and then, I don't know when these people knew they were going to have to ask for a continuance, but it's kind of sliding all of us, that, you know, we're all prepared and setting our time aside to sit through these things, which is like going to the dentist half the time. And you, unfortunately, Jim, you don't even have backup that you can slide somebody in on this. So I guess in the future, we have some alternate projects, just like we have alternates on the board, that if somebody drops out, you know, I know there's public notices that have to be issued, but maybe some of these people should issue their public notices, and then if we don't get to them, then that's what we continue, so we have a full slate each time. We wasted a lot of time tonight, where we could have got to some of the meat on one of these projects.
We wasted a lot of time tonight where we could have got to some of the meat on one of these projects at least. Just, and again, I think it's inconsiderate that uh things happen, but, you know, we were all ready to review these projects and they're continued, you know, so it's, it's
Cheers.
Let me just add something to that. You know, it is unfortunate that it happened the way it did, but I would suggest to you that, you know, requiring other applicants to be um in the dugout waiting at bat with all their experts and at, on their dime, uh and then they don't get to go forward because the person does finally show up. It's kind of not fair to them as well. It, it's a really difficult thing to manage.
Sure. All right, well, thanks. I just had to vent a little, so thanks for letting me.
I understand. Having been, having been an applicant's attorney for a lot of years, my, my antenna just went woo.
Don't worry. I feel so much better now that.
Emily, I'd like to voice my opinion on this.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ron.
Go ahead, Ron.
It seems to me that it, it might be to everyone's advantage if we started May 5th at 6 o'clock, run what we can run and assign May 19th is the additional meeting to start at 6:00 and run what we can run. That gives Jim ample time to contact anybody concerned and let them know so they can prepare their stuff. And like Attorney Hogan said, I believe was her, why make these people get their experts on board and wait around and wait around just to get postponed? If they know they're going to be on a specific date, there's a better chance we're going to get to hear them. And they just be fair with everybody.
Thanks, Ron. Totally agree. Great, great ideas. Um, Logistically, does 6 o'clock work for folks? Like, do we have, you know, work that we need to worry about?
Uh, me personally, Keith here, I wouldn't know until the day I was almost, um, long story short.
Jim, do you have any sense of Al's availability at that timeframe?
Not, not really, but one thing I'm thinking about now is that um we, we, we have notices that are already out there that says the meeting starts at 7:00. So I don't want somebody to come in and say, oh, you started at 6:00. I said 7:00. So I mean, today you got to be prepared for anything and everything, okay? You got to be precise.
So any, any notices that would go, if you decide you want to start at 6:00 because of the backlog, any notices now? You, I mean, you'd alert all of your, your people in the hopper to say, send your notices for 6:00, not 7:00.
Okay, well, Kamoli's already out there. It has, has already been noticed, okay? That, that's out there. It was continued tonight to the next meeting. I don't know that we've set a real definite time. I suppose I can catch uh Stone Ridge and tell them to notice for 6:00. We could do that. Can catch that, but you can't catch the stuff that's already been done, I guess.
Right, so I think you've got to figure out which one goes on which night. So that's why I suggested that if you talk to Ms. Rocha as to whether or not she's really actually going to be ready for May 5th, given what she represented this evening, it might be that it makes sense for her to not, I mean, and you could put it on the agenda for purposes of continuing to the date certain for anybody who was on the line and who's left. It would be, and there's no more, no, no more harm or foul than there was tonight. They show up expecting a meeting. It's like, well, that's being continued to a date certain to X. So that takes care of that aspect of things. And then for um Stone Ridge, uh, they haven't done any notices yet, so it's easy to catch that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So a big missing piece is Al, but I trust that you guys will coordinate with him and will, will plan on May 5th starting at 6:00 and May 19th also starting at 6:00. And we'll just wait to hear more detail about confirmation about all that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
Do we have a, a motion to adjourn at this point? Are there any other thoughts we want to share before a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second public forum slot available?
A second public forum?
Yeah, on the, on the agenda, there's usually another opportunity for the public to voice their opinions before we actually adjourn.
Yes.
What did we cover that night? And I missed it.
We did ask public forum and no one raised their hand, so we moved on, Ron.
I guess I'm a candidate for Alzheimer's. Thank you.
This is Carolyn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, second?
You second that, yeah. Thanks, Ron. You too.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. Uh, state your name and state your vote. Shamshiniya, yes.
Pearlwith, yes.
Lindelof, yes.
Mike, yes.
Any packer, yes.
All right, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Good to see you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.